First call of Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Monday, August 7th at 6:30 PM. To order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Prove up meeting agenda. We have some changes. I'd like to move Letter B under Consent Agenda, under between number eight and nine, for the awards ceremony. Also like to take on a new business, Letter A, move it to thirteen. And under Letter B, follow that with Letter C, Ordinance Amendment. And then corresponding ones, move them all down to eleven, please. And if there's any other additions or deletions.
I make the motion that we approve the meeting agenda for the Monday, August 7th, Board of Trustees Meeting as amended.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Kendall, supported by Treasurer Honnold. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approval minutes, six five, two thousand seventeen, six twenty-two, two thousand seventeen.
I will make the motion that we approve the minutes of six five seventeen and six twenty-two seventeen as written.
Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Honnold, supported by Trustee Curly. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, public announcements. Jared?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and honorable Board members. I'm State Representative Jeff Herrick. Out of my listening, visiting tour, visiting various boards and commissions around my district, as I think this is the second time I've gotten around the district, listening to people's concerns and taking it long, I mean, to open up the hall, a half hour to listen to people's issues. Just some updates and things to let the board know. Obviously, people probably felt a bit of pain on the registration increase on their car insurance, added to the registration and the gas tax increase, which was done by the previous legislature legislature. But that money should be, you should start seeing that money trickling down in road funding to the county and that should, you know, be available for the township to improve the roads. Continuing to work on reducing bureaucracy to get more money into roads. You should also see a bump in your revenue sharing in the next budget. This is a big thing that I push for coming from local government, so it's not where I'd like it to be, but it definitely has gone up. So that's been a positive. I did see you have a town hall on marijuana. Just let you know that I have a resolution in the House trying to push the federal government to make a decision, as people know. It's still illegal federally and that forms a conflict for local government because the law state might be violating federal law. I am trying to work with our congressional delegation to push them to make a decision what they're going to do. Either enforce it, encourage the DA to actually enforce the law, or grant states like ourselves a waiver to regulate it ourselves, in a way that we've decided by a vote of the people. With so many first responders in the room, thank you all for your service. Having left the firehouse in December to go to the State House, want to share with you, with so many attacks on EMS Fire Department police over in recent times, so many people attacking emergency responders, sure, because of their frustration with government. I have a bill in the House that will probably be come up to committee, which would increase the fines when assaults an police firefighter or paramedic while they're performing their duties. I think it's important that society needs to speak out and say, "You can't attack our first responders because you're frustrated with government, that they're deserved to our citizens and we're going to stuff up the fines for that." So if there's any other question, I'll be available after the meeting also. Thank you very much.
Another public announcement. Any public comment this time?
Mickey Luda-McFroster. Just wanted to catch everybody before they leave because I know right after it'll be gone. Just want to say to the Fire Department, awesome job. Again, everybody was friendly, the food was awesome, people that were there were very cordial, I had a great time. You've done it every year and this year, you did it again. And also, thank you to the Sportsman's Club because I understand that they always donate that, which is really nice of them. Amen, guys. Stay safe. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate you too.
Any other public comment this time? Any other public comment? Number seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed on this Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Board of Publics requests add or prior to the meeting. In which event, the Chair of the Meeting may remove such items from the Consent Agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number Nine below. Approval of this Consent Agenda shall be by majority roll call vote of those present and voting.
I have, we had some prepaid bills because we had no meeting in July. So our prepay's total, one million four forty-seven, eight forty-nine and fifty cents. Invoices, on the list for approval for payment tomorrow, eight eight, two thousand seventeen, total three hundred sixty thousand eight hundred ten dollars and nineteen cents. For a total, from six six to eight eight, two thousand seventeen, of one million eight hundred eight thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I make the motion to accept the Treasurer's report as stated. Any second? Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Curly. You're doing this to pay the bills right now, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk, roll call, please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Honnold?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Motion passes. Read more for the Consent Agenda, please.
Make the motion that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented, taking, removing the Fire Department and putting it under, um, item to move.
Can't hear back here. The mics aren't, I think, are on.
All right. Just need to plug the Director's mic.
Can't hear you either, Ron. Check your mic.
Can't hear me?
Just can't add on the intercom.
Okay, I don't have a battery in mine right now, so I'll say it really loud. I make the motion that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented, removing the Fire Department report and placing it under Item Eight.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Kendall, supported by Treasurer Honnold. Any other questions or discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Kendall?
Aye.
Honnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Letter B, Fire Department Report, Chief Hushay. Thank you for waiting, sir.
Everybody here?
I think you're going to pull it up, Dan.
Well, I could, I could just, sir. We have two serious awards tonight. The first one will be Fire Department only, and this is Years of Service Award. At this time, I would call the three recipients up to accept their awards. Firefighter Helman Thielman, Sergeant Dean Collins, and Sergeant Tim Lanat.
At this time, too, if there's any family members that would like to come up so they have clear shots or pictures, too, please feel free to go anywhere you want to take pictures. That's better.
I think it works now. Amongst the three of these gentlemen, there are over forty years of service to this community, and that in itself is, is an astounding number, especially for a smaller, paint-on-call-style department as ours. So at this time, I'd like to call Helman Thielman up first. In recognition of ten years of service to the Lenox Township Fire Department, I wish to present you this award for ten years of outstanding service to the Lenox Township Fire Department. Congratulations, Helman. Dean Collins. Dean and Helman were hired the very same day, so that doesn't happen very often where I'm standing up here presenting these awards. Sergeant Dean Collins, in recognition of ten years of service to the Lenox Township Fire Department and outstanding service to your community, like to present you this award, award, for ten years of service to the Lenox Township Fire Department. Congratulations, Dean. And then the next young man. When this young man started working for me twenty years ago, he actually had a full head of hair. So with that, in recognition of Sergeant Timothy Lanat, for twenty years of dedicated service to the Lenox Township Fire Department and outstanding service to the entire community, I wish to present you this award for twenty years of service, dated today, August 7th, 2017. Congratulations, Dean. Along with their awards, they get Years of Service Award, stars that go on their uniform that they'll wear with their Class A uniform. And then additionally, the two, all of them need to get to the tailor because they should have stars on their sleeves for every five years of service. So you're on your own now, okay? All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. This time, I'm going to call the entire group of firefighter individuals up. Jeff will call the EMS personnel, and then I'll, I'll read off the awards. Okay. Firefighter Jason Lockwood, firefighter Tim Lanat, firefighter Eric Oakes, Sergeant Ron Goss, Sergeant Brian Klavski, Assistant Chief Marty Haraway, and Deputy Chris Corey.
And from the EMS, we need, usually I don't need this much anyways, from the EMS, we need Paramedic Michelle General, Paramedic Ronald Miller, and EMT Greg Van Ham.
This is still working. There we go. On Saturday, May 13th, at approximately eight forty-five AM, Lenox Township Fire Department and Richmond Lenox EMS were dispatched for an emergency medical call of a male patient down and not breathing. Per procedure, the on-duty Deputy, Deputy Chris Corey was also dispatched to the scene. Prior to arrival to Fire Department and EMS, Deputy Corey arrived, retrieved his automated defibrillator, and entered the home where he was directed to the unconscious patient. Deputy Corey immediately checked for a pulse, found none, and started, and began CPR. A few minutes later, Richmond Lenox and Lenox Township Fire Department personnel arrived on the scene and began advanced life support measures as Deputy Corey continued chest compressions. EMS personnel administered a shock to the patient along with medications, and the patient was revived and subsequently transported to the hospital. Due to the actions of all these personnel, the patient was hospitalized, hospitalized, and subsequently released and returned home. Without the professional lifesaving actions of all these personnel, the outcome may have been quite different. On behalf of the Lenox Township Fire Department, Richmond Lenox EMS, Director White, and myself, we wish to congratulate all you men and women on the outstanding performance of your duties on that day.
Deputy Christopher Corey?
Lenox Township Fire Department hereby awards this lifesaving award to Deputy Christopher Corey for outstanding lifesaving procedures performed on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, presented this day, Monday, August 7th, 2017. Congratulations. Firefighter Timothy Lanat II. Lenox Township Fire Department lifesaving award, the Lenox Township Fire Department hereby presents this lifesaving award to firefighter Timothy Lanat II for outstanding lifesaving procedures performed on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, presented this day, Monday, August 7th, 2017. Firefighter Eric Oakes. Lenox Township Fire Department lifesaving award, the Lenox Township Fire Department hereby presents this lifesaving award to firefighter Eric Oakes for outstanding lifesaving procedures performed on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, presented this day, Monday, August 7th, 2017. Congratulations. Firefighter Jason Lockwood. Lenox Township Fire Department lifesaving award, Lenox Township Fire Department hereby presents this lifesaving award to firefighter Jason Lockwood for outstanding lifesaving procedures performed on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, presented this day, Monday, August 7th, 2017. Congratulations. Sergeant Brian Goss. Lenox Township Fire Department lifesafety award, lifesaving award, the Lenox Township Fire Department hereby presents this lifesaving award to Sergeant Ronald Goss for outstanding lifesaving procedures performed on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, presented this day, Monday, August 7th, 2017. Congratulations, Ron. Sergeant Brian Klavski. Lenox Township Fire Department lifesaving award. Lenox Township Fire Department hereby presents this lifesaving award to Sergeant Brian Klavski for outstanding lifesaving procedures performed on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, presented this day, Monday, August 7th, 2017. Congratulations, Brian. Assistant Chief Marty Haraway. Lenox Township Fire Department lifesaving award, the Lenox Township Fire Department hereby presents this lifesaving award to Assistant Chief Marty Haraway for outstanding lifesaving procedures performed on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, presented this day, Monday, August 7th, 2017. Congratulations.
So, I'm going to bite the phone, I'm just going to turn this away for a minute. I'm just going to take a moment to put in a really quick plug, let's call it the commercial announcement, for, for something really important that happened on this run. And what really happened on this run was not just the, the cooperation of the Sheriff's Department and, and the EMS and the Fire Department. What happened on this run was thanks in this case to Deputy Corey. We had early CPR done. And early CPR is all that we know scientifically today that actually really saves lives. You could be across the street from our new EMS building on 32 Mall Road, and unless your family begins CPR or somebody arrives very quickly who knows it, your chances of survival drop about ten percent a minute. It takes a minute to call nine one one. It takes a minute for them to call us out. It takes a minute for us to get in the truck and drive across the street. It takes a minute once we're in your driveway to get into your home. Once we're in your home, it takes another minute for us to kind of grasp what's going on and begin treatment. If nobody's begun CPR, we only have half a chance to save your life. And that's we're across the street from our building. Now multiply that by living on Place Road or Low Plank and 29 Mall Road. We're here at the Township Hall for that minute. And you understand the importance of people knowing CPR. If I said we could save fifty thousand lives a year by somebody just knowing CPR, and I could get people to grasp that idea at a national level, you know, we would, we would have a lot more chance of saving people. So I say all that to say to you tonight that if you haven't taken a CPR class, find a way to take one. We do them at the, we do them at the EMS every month on the second Saturday. They cost nothing to come in and take. The Fire Department does it. We'll do them at your churches, your schools, you know, anywhere we can get a group of people. We'll do them in somebody's living room if you can get us five or six people to stand around and listen for a few hours. So please, really, like you say, if there's no, if there's a take-home message from tonight, the take-home message is, learn CPR, learn CPR, learn CPR. With that, EMS also provides awards to its employees. We call them the Distinguished Service Cross. They're, they're a red, a red cross with, with a couple of red bars and a, and a white center that we wear on our uniforms, very similar to the Fire Department's awards. The only way our personnel receive those awards is if they respond to a situation where a person is clinically dead and due to their actions, that person not just survives the trip to the hospital, but actually leaves the hospital and returns home to their family and friends. So it's not something we give out very often or very easily, but tonight, I'm very proud to be able to give these lifesaving awards to the following individuals. So I'd like to first call up Paramedic Michelle General. Paramedic Robert Miller. I just want to mention, Paramedic Ken Stewart. Ken is away on vacation this week down in Chicago visiting some grandchildren. So he's not with us, but was there that morning on the run. And last, EMT Gregory Van Ham. And I think that, that concludes tonight's event. I know for those family and friends that are here, you are certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the Township meeting, but it's not absolutely required. I know there'll be some opportunities for some, for some pictures and other things. We usually do those out in the lobby when we're all done. With that...
Thank you, Lenox Township for all the continued support of the department, its personnel, and thank you to all the families for supporting everything all these people do every day, 24/7. As Jeff had mentioned, our personnel will be getting ribbon set, they will wear also on their uniforms. Unfortunately, guys, they've been on backboard for six weeks, so I didn't work yet. So with that, thank you again very much.
Geez, we made so much up.
Yes, you know, Mr. Drake, were you, did you want to do a public comment? I know you missed it. Did you want to speak on behalf of anything?
Well, I can wait until my, my term expires.
So, subdue, sir. I'll give you that opportunity. I just wanted to keep you waiting. If you'd like to do it now, I'd be happy to bludgeon.
Well, yeah, you would.
By all means, sir.
Thank you.
I think I know everybody here, so they're going to work together from representing here today, the Lenox New Haven Historical Society, and I got a little one pager here just briefly, I'll read it, which is the summation of my presentation. On November the eighth later this year, the Lenox New Haven Historical Society will experience its 26th anniversary. In 26 years of hard work by volunteers from far and near to acquire and restore the historic New Haven Railroad Depot, the one place that contributed so much to the economic development during this part of the county. Since its restoration, the depot has likely become the most photographed site in the county. Attesting to this point, photos of the site has appeared on the cover of the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce publication. Chamber of Commerce publications two times, the cover of the local area Yellow Pages, and was recently highlighted in an article in the McComb Now magazine. Some of you might have seen that. It is a credit to the image and reputation of the village and township. The village history and its preservation is the responsibility of those of us who are living in. We must do what we can to preserve it for the benefit of our children and future generations. That responsibility is shared by all of us. Earlier today, we launched a project to collect personal recollections of history in the area through personal interviews of seniors from the Lenox New Haven area. We video recorded recollections from an 83-year-old township resident. Many of you, I won't mention his name, but many of you I'm sure know he's been around here practically all his life. We presently have about 30 people on that list whom we seek to interview. If anyone knows of others who would like to be included, please let us know. The eventual result of these interviews is intended to avail a window into history of the local area, which can be enjoyed by current and future generations. And hopefully, we would eventually hope to be online with those, so we could look at any of those at your leisure from the home. Lenox New Haven Historical Society is a 501(c)(3) federal-recognized nonprofit organization. The society is an open membership organization. Anyone can become a member. We are strictly a volunteer organization. All of the properties of the organization are fully owned by the organization, which in turn is equally owned by its members. Now, the reason we are before you tonight is to request a strengthening of the bond between the Historical Society and the community it serves. In order to recognize, strengthen, and acknowledge the value of the Lenox New Haven Historical Society to the community at large, it is important that its relationship with the community be formalized. Thus, the Lenox New Haven Historical Society is requesting a formal recognition of this organization as the acknowledged Historical Society for the Township. We propose that the Township adopt a resolution in that regard. I have here a copy of a similar resolution, which has been adopted by the New Haven Village Council. George, thanks. It's recent, you can read it recently. I think I was going to read it, but for the benefit of the public, if I might. Whereas, this is Resolution Number 17-005 of Lenox New Haven. Whereas Lenox New Haven Historical Society is a registered assumed name, say, Redeport Incorporated at 58585 Victoria Street, New Haven, Michigan. Lenox New Haven Historical Society. Whereas Lenox New Haven Historical Society is a 501(c)(3) Michigan nonprofit corporation with membership open to the public, and whereas Lenox New Haven Historical Society presently operates a museum and actively advocates acquisition and restoration of historic buildings, as well as the acquisition and collection of historical artifacts. Whereas the Village of New Haven recognizes the significance of the acquisition, collection, and maintenance of historical artifacts and property within the village by a private entity without the contribution of taxpayer funds. Now therefore, it is resolved that while Lenox New Haven Historical Society continues in the functions identified above, it shall be recognized as the official Historical Society for the Village of New Haven, signed by Chris Deverum, 17th of July. No, you have questions? We haven't tried to answer them.
Are you asking us to adopt a similar resolution, Mr. Drake?
Pardon?
Are you asking us to adopt a similar resolution?
Yes, yes. I would like to, since we really try to service the Lenox and Village of New Haven, we would like a, just to strengthen that bond between us and just to, so people who are there to be comfortable that, yeah, we do avail ourselves to Lenox Township as well as the Village of New Haven, and we said the Village of New Haven, Lenox Township. We call ourselves the Lenox New Haven Historical Society. We really mean that we're doing the present, the entire area, we intend to service the entire area, and we are open to membership from the entire area. In fact, we have several members already that are from the Township, and it comes and goes, you know, who's active and who's not, but we have several members that are active already.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Drake? This will be something we have to draft up when I go into the document for next meeting.
Well, I just, that sample, just so you'll be aware of what to...
Right, yeah, we'd have to draft a similar to this for the next meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Drake.
I have one question here. I think it's relevant to the board, and I just want to make sure that the board understands what you're asking. You're not asking to become a, I'm sorry. The society is not asking to become a public entity. It's going to stay a private organization under its 501(c)(3). Nothing will change. It'll still be a private...
No, no change.
Okay, all right. So it's not a request to make it an official committee?
There are no obligations, other than just recognizing that, you know...
You ask to include us in the historical...
And if somebody down the road over there forms another Historical Society, you can always join them or adopt them if you like, but we would like to, we would feel comfortable in saying, yeah, we are recognized in the Township as being looked to, because a lot of the people, as I mentioned in this one effort that we're just starting today, which I mentioned, I'll mention that it was very successful. It went a little longer. Some people, you know, get a little long-winded, but it was our first attempt at doing an interview, and it was a successful effort. And I think it will add an awful lot, because there's so much about this area that's really not recorded anywhere, that personal stories and histories, and who was where and when, and where they came from, and how they got to be, that have connections with people that are families that have come and gone, that they may not even be aware of. And this is a chance to learn something. And I think it's really important, because if we, the quickest way that we can lose our way in the society is to forget where we came from. And I didn't invent that statement, incidentally, yes. Anyway, that's, and this is kind of what we're, how our long-term mission is, to recover history, particularly in this particular project. And we'll be probably doing this for the next couple of years, because history does continue. It never stops. But we want to be able to write it and preserve it for generations that haven't even been thought of yet. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I really appreciate you thinking about us as being connected.
Oh, you absolutely are. Hey, your name is on the marquee. Headline, number one.
Matter of fact, the clerk just said she'd be having to draft this ordinance for the next meeting.
I will draft a resolution in and send it over to Steve and have it reviewed, and we'll have it ready for the next meeting.
Well, do we need a motion? Because we saw what we originally had proposed. These guys, they chopped it up pretty good before we actually finally got there.
Thank you. We'll just bring it back at the next meeting. Fair enough.
You would need a motion to adopt it through, don't you?
No, just...
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Thank you, George.
All right. We're under new business now. We moved Letter A back past closed session, so we're going to start off with Letter B. Mr. Safe, grade review fee resolution.
The A's moved where?
Passed under number 13, might as well say.
Okay.
Mr. Safe.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good evening. This has, this resolution to adopt the fees that allow our office and the planner to check the grade review, the grade, the proposed grades on residential homes before they get constructed. And this will give us a mechanism to check them here prior to construction and during construction, to make sure that they're in harmony with the neighbors. And I believe that the Planning Commission approved it, the board went ahead, and here we are at the resolution stage to allow for the fees to get charged for the applicants. So I'll take any questions today.
Do you know what surrounding communities charge for this service? Are we in line with that?
Yes, yes, actually, I, about 14, 15, 20 years ago, I did one from a local township. And this fee was about 13 years ago. We kept it the same, at the same rate. That's pretty much covered for our, for the surveyor's time and one hour of my time to, for the surveyor to go out and shoot these grades, make sure the contractor is building for the plan, and we don't have any drainage issues. And we know how those goes. We are reactive, as we've been in the past few years. The township ended up paying for that service, and we have to, you know, come up with some kind of solution. Sometimes we can't, because the house is there already. So we're trying to be proactive with these construction lots, so we don't have any future disputes between the residents. And this is also another mechanism for, you know, in the future, we're going to get subventions. And those, if we don't have this mechanism, there's no way for us to check those.
My only concern was that we were pricing, doing a heat schedule that's going to price us to a point that somebody would not want to build in this community because our fees were so high. That's why I asked about the neighboring communities.
Totally, Mr. Drake.
And I'd like to speak to that, too. This is a subject that came up eight years ago, I believe, when we tried to take, that was our number one concern at that time, exactly what you're saying right now. We did not want to price ourselves, you know, we wanted to compete against other neighboring communities. But I can tell you 100%, this has haunted us every year since then. We've encountered great difficulties with people that are building, with the surrounding property owners, thousands of dollars to the township, and it's a problem that to go back on to try and fix is almost impossible. It's been, every year, we've exhausted numerous code enforcement hours, numerous engineering hours on it. And it typically just doesn't affect one resident, it'll affect three or four because of the way these parcels lay out. We have long pulling alley parcels in some cases where alley gets butts up to the back of a property both sides, so it's not unusual to affect four residents at a time. So the cost of that is, when you look at it as a whole, well worth the money to be proactive and get it out of the way and have it done right, right out of the vehicle.
And from what I understand, Mr. Semen, there'll be a full survey crew out on the preliminary and on the final break, both times, right?
Correct.
That's the reason for that fee. I know engineering fees and surveying fees when it comes to mortgages and stuff are way above the number you have there, so I don't have a problem with what you have here, but that's, that cleared it up, the conversation we had earlier today.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Safe?
Either we pay now, basically, or we pay later.
That was our number one concern, the whole board's concern, years ago. That's the last thing you want to do, but it definitely has got to be a cost to a business here, because we've encountered so many problems with it.
Ryan, this happens, I'm taking, this happens every year, surveyors answer that, maybe Cam, that it would...
Every year in the spring, when the rains come, this is the problem, we, they start sending in the complaints. And this hopefully will alleviate all that.
Yeah, there's, there are standards that we have, we'll give the applicant, so they know how to grade their own, where to send the water instead of flooding your neighbor.
This is something most cities are charging already anyway, yes. Most city building departments.
Correct.
And this goes for current and, like, new and, don't...
New only.
Yeah, matter of fact, you can attest to this issue.
Yeah, I wish we could do it. They already, they already have their construction permit and occupancy, so we can enforce it on the existing.
Hopefully, this will eliminate any future problems from this point forward. That's what we're dealing with.
Semen, how soon would that take effect?
As soon as you guys approve it, today.
Doesn't that have to be published? It's published in 30 days' notice, I think.
That would be a question to the Attorney's Ordinance.
The ordinance is 30 days.
The fees can be immediately effective.
Any other questions for Mr. Safe?
Make a motion, we adopt a resolution adopting the grade review fees into the Township ordinance. I hope I'm hearing that the correct way.
Well, it's actually not going to be a ordinance, it's just adopting the fees.
Just adopting the fees. I make a motion, we adopt it as written.
You do not, it's part of the packet. I think there's reference to the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the resolution adopting grade review fees, and put into the record, so I think it's good.
This is standard fee? That's not in position now?
Excuse me. Do you have a question? Do you have a question?
Yes.
Which question?
I just asked, Mr. Semen, is this my standard fee?
Yes, that's what the board is adapting.
How many acres you have?
No, it's per application, so if that house is 1,100 feet versus 11,000 feet, it's the same fee. Attorney, the ordinance has been adopted to enforce this, correct? And we are only having a motion to list the fees. Is that correct?
Following the, this was put on the agenda with this resolution going first.
Okay.
So if the board doesn't adopt the ordinance, and these fees are only related to that ordinance, then we would have to go back and reconsider this resolution. However, this resolution may also be applicable to private fee fees.
Sure.
So let's just address that if we come to that point where the ordinance doesn't get adopted.
Okay.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Safe. Let her see ordinance amendment. Thank you, Mr. Safe, let her see ordinance amendment. Did you wanna speak to this now?
Well, certainly, this is related to the topic you were just discussing. It's an ordinance amendment, amending the existing building grades provisions into ordinance to update them and bring them to the current standards for the indoor recommendations. Draft ordinance has been prepared with the assistance of our office and, of course, satisfied.
Thank you.
Well, your, wasn't the motion I made affecting this, or no?
That was for the fees, that was for the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance, amending zoning ordinance Article 3-32, Section 310.
Second, motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Clifford. Any questions, discussion? This will be a rule, Justice Clerk, rule call please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candle?
Aye.
Trumley?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. GPW seasonal wage increase request.
Good evening. I submitted a letter to the board for their consideration, and really, this kinda goes back some months ago. In June, we, we had an agenda item for compensation packages for all the employees. Unfortunately, when we discussed all those packages, we had one individual that started right after those discussions concluded. That being one of our seasonal personnel, Tyler Butt. So when it was acted upon, it was kind of missed, if you will. So the reason I'm bringing it up now is, you know, Tyler's worked right along with our other seasonal employee that we had hired, right around the same time, they've done the same, same job, worked the same hours and so forth. So I kinda feel like it's only right that we maybe revisit this and also give him the same quarter and hour raise as we did our other seasonal personnel. And I would ask that that be retro to July 1st, just like everybody else.
Any other questions?
Making a motion that we do a retroactive wage increase of twenty-five cents per hour to Tyler Butt, beginning July 1st. Second.
Motion by Clerk Candle, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion?
I agree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes.
Thank you very much, thank you.
BSNA software training request.
I actually included this proposal in the packet this month. It's for one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars total, to have the gentleman from BSNA come out. And although the request says general ledger accounts be able to cash receipt in payroll, we've actually talked to BSNA and would like to concentrate on budgeting that day. However, we left it open with the other applications, in case there's any employees that have questions from the past training session, that they have an opportunity to come and get those things also covered.
Any questions?
None, from me.
I would like to make a motion to approve the training from BSNA for a total of one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second, thank you. Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Treasurer Clifford. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion passes, thank you. Planning Commission recording secretary position. As you know, we had a resignation regarding this position. I'd like to appoint Jeanette to take the position over with, I believe, as Karen Caltz is an alternate in doing this position. And I guess there's to be discussion regarding pay, what the board's pleasure is.
Original pay, I mean, one of trustees' minutes is by the hour, and the, that was a per diem, it was paid Miss Fuchet because she was an outside employee of the township. That's where we need to adjust either way, if we, that's the question here, did we, we raise the board secretary to, recording secretary to a per diem, or did we reduce that to the hour? I think that's the question here, and I, I don't have a problem personally raising the recording secretary for the board to a per diem, as long as the work that's being done, like Miss Fuchet did it, did it on their own time. Vicky did those on her own time, and that's the way I look at it, we can balance it that way, raising the board secretary, recording secretary to a per diem, and to match those. And we could go the other way, but if we do that, and if we ever have to hire off the street, we have to adjust it again then, because Vicky was off the street, Miss Fuchet, and then, Mrs. Fuchet, I should say. So it would be, you'd have to do that, because nobody's gonna come in, we don't have an hourly rate set for that. So, that's my personal opinion, I don't know what the board... Board's opinion is, but that's, that's right.
I agree with Scott.
You agree?
The only thing, the only thing we might have to do is in the future, depending on the recording secretary positions, say it's board review or ZBA, depending on what their hours are, we would have to adjust, because I know board review, in case that comes up, that goes to the, to a nine o'clock time. So we might have to look at that in the future as far as whether we wanna keep it an hourly rate or per diem. So, that being said, I, I don't have a problem raising the board secretary to that, to the per diem level, as long as all time's done, all work is done on their time, whether it's their lunch hour or after hours, not...
Or before.
Or before, correct. Because that's the reason Vicky made that, that per diem, because she was told to go home, we were asking somebody outside the township to do it.
Mr. Joppik?
Just, you know, and I haven't had an opportunity to view the, the concept of the per diem payment from a legal standpoint, but Jeanette is a township employee presently, so as a technical matter, the first thought I'd have is, I understand the meaning about her own time, and I think what you're really getting at is not, it, it will be on township time, but it will be outside of her regular work hours when she's doing her duties as the deputy supervisor. So, as an employee, she's gonna have these added duties that she is going to undertake. I assume she's agreed to this and agreed to be paid on her due basis. It would apply to both, both recording secretaries, the Swantec as, as the boards, and the Samantha Miggly as the planning commission. So they can handle them the same manner, they're still employees when they're performing. They're still employees, but the extra work involved would go to...
You have a question, please?
Forgive me for not understanding the per diem, I recall saying that she will earn her current salary per hour while she's taking over this planning commission position. No, what is the...
It's what, what was being paid, what was, what was being paid to the person doing that job. She would be getting that amount, nothing would change.
So this is gonna be an increase for whatever, how many hours she does it, or...
Not, not be an increase. She would be getting paid what that, what the previous person got paid, that's it. Outside of her other hours, she's not getting paid her hourly rate.
Okay. So it could be less? No. So it's not like...
It's, it's a, it's a set amount.
It's a set amount, well, I don't know what the amount is, and it's not been said, so that's what I'm asking. I assume...
A hundred, what is it?
Hundred and twenty dollars a meeting.
Hundred and twenty dollars a meeting.
Oh, did not know that, so...
That's what Miss Fuchet was being paid.
Okay. May I ask a question?
Sure, that's...
Does Carol, Miss Swantec, Mrs. Swantec, does she earn her hourly wage while she was doing this position? Or does she consider this another meeting? Is she getting paid a hundred and twenty dollars for taking minutes now?
No.
So you're asking an employee who currently works here to get the money that's already set, kinda set, a hundred and twenty dollars a meeting?
Correct.
And you all are agreeing with that?
And her to get the same.
And, yes, Carol to get the same.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know, how much it was and everything, thank you.
We didn't wanna change what was already existed, but we wanted it to be fair to everybody's...
Well, I understand that, that's fair, it's the way to go.
Are we good legally, Mr. Joppik? Well, there, there are a couple of questions here, I, I don't know if the proposal here is to also change what Swantec is doing in terms of how she's paid and that doing... What the proposal is, is that it's at home, or... The planning commission, the planning commission is per diem, and Miss Fuchet resigned from the planning commission. We hired an in-house employee, our deputy supervisors do that. While instead of dropping that per diem to the hourly rate, we would raise the Swantec's rate to the per diem, the same per diem that is for the planning commission. I, I think the question I had was, is the proposal, increase or changing, because tied to that was that the work was not to be done during work hours, preparing the minutes, currently, the deputy clerk does prepare the minutes during her work hours, and not all... I, I'm new on the board, but the, the per diem was paid, Miss Fuchet, to, to, because she was an house, she was outside the township, that was her only job, she'd come in just to record that, okay? And then, and Miss Swantec is currently doing the board for her hourly rate. So when Miss Fuchet resigned, and we had, we, we hired from, we brought Samantha Miggly in from within, it puts, she's at the per diem, we didn't wanna drop that per diem, I personally don't wanna drop that per diem in case we have to hire off the street if somebody resigns, because you're not gonna get them for that. And to be fair to Miss Swantec, we would, we would bring that, her position up to the per diem rate, as opposed to the hourly rate that she currently works for. And so, but tying that in, because Miss Fuchet did the work at home, from what I understand. So any work, bringing that per diem up for Carol, Miss Swantec, Miss Swantec, we would, both girls that are doing the minutes now would do their...
On their own time.
On their own time, because that's what Miss Fuchet did. Well, I, I'm not certain that that's been discussed with the deputy clerk, and I'm not sure that...
That was...
I have, I'm caught up here a little bit, I apologize for... No, that's fine, that's fine. But I think you wanna make sure that it's been discussed with the employees, so perhaps it would be something to postpone until the next meeting, unless there's, I think that there's questions. I don't know if Carol wants to answer that now, but it's, we can table it.
I would rather talk to the chairman about that.
Okay. Well, that's why, this is why we've put this way, the clerk has had this discussion with us, so...
Well, quite honestly, I, I think I wanna take, if I, if I may, I would wanna take a look at this from an hourly wage standpoint, since you're talking about being an employee and paying their regular wage rate, and whether there are any wage requirements that would apply here. I haven't checked into that.
I had a question regarding statutory duties, that was the main one. So, that initially would fall under statutory duties. For our deputy supervisor?
Deputy, deputy clerk.
I looked up the statutory duties for the deputy clerk and did not find that the, according, the township board being minutes were her responsibility, but anybody else feels free to look it up outside.
I would disagree with that.
Well, it sounds like there's a few questions I have to, 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 to answer to this, so... I, my, my, if you're asking for my recommendation and thoughts on this, it would be to postpone this to the next meeting so we can get into these items.
Yep.
And make sure we have all the answers to the questions.
Motion.
Don't have a problem with that either.
Make a motion that we table the planning commission secretary appointment.
Second. Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Treasurer Clifford. Any other questions, discussion? Well, I have a, I have a discussion about this, we have to have so many for the next meeting, so I, I don't want...
I would say we have to ask Jeanette to do it, so let her do it then.
Okay, that's, I'll have it covered.
And I have to count, saying we're the same way we did this time until this is resolved.
Basically, nothing changes from the way it was, so...
I don't think we could, it's just the planning commission person that talked about for the next meeting.
Yep. Any other discussion regarding this right now? All those in favor? Aye. Post, motion passes, thank you. Community room carpet cleaning request.
I had someone come out this afternoon to give us a new quote, the cleaning, the carpeting in here. What we had before was eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars to clean this room and the stain protector. Since it has a minimum of twelve hundred dollars to come out, so we didn't meet that, so I had them come out today. And the area across from the break room, where we have our lunches and... They broke it down, that area, and then the long hallway going down to the sheriff's door down there. That brings us in with those two addings, one thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. So that's just a tad over, so they can come out and do it if you all approve. Try to figure out another way, but with, you know, without any other stain protection on the hallway, or... And it, it doesn't qualify, then, if we take something out of that quote. So the quote you have today with the date in the right-hand corner is the most current.
Does that protection really work, does it, does it?
Yeah, we've got a couple of really big stains in this room here, and it really needs to be cleaned.
I make a motion that we approve having the carpet cleaned in the amount of one thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. One thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty cents. I'm quite certain we budgeted quite enough money at budget time to cover that.
Yeah, for building the grounds, there's plenty of money there.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Clerk Candle, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will set this up for like a Thursday when the room's not being used, so nobody has to come in on a Friday.
Great.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
One quick thing, we are gonna have some people coming out to teach us TPs. One quick thing, we are going to have some people coming out to teach us TPs, the new voting equipment, so we can order to make sure we're not in their way.
Yes, absolutely.
Putting somebody else out.
Okay.
Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Public comment? Any public comment this time? No public comment? Twelve. Close session. Sorry.
One more question about that Recording Secretary position. This, when Miss Vicki Coucher took it, I don't know what position she was here when she took the job. I don't know if it was just offered to her. She worked here at the time. I know most of these workers are employees here. Was there any, is this open? It was, is it your choice just to pick somebody and say, will you take your job? I assume it is.
Yes.
It's the board's decision. So it's only, it's not open to everybody in the, in the, in here and as a, who anybody else could do that? I mean, it's only just them.
We had a resignation and we had a meeting coming up. We had a full constitution meeting, like there's no time to advertise.
Mm-hmm. I mean, was it offered to Miss Swantec? I don't know if she wants it or not. I'm just asking because she does recording also. I don't know that.
I took charge and asked Jeanette. I also asked the clerk if her deputy clerk would be interested in it. Took charge and put the person in position to take care of it.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Number 12. Close session. Oh, no, before we hit close session, Cam, the goal net. I have a copy of some proposals that, do we need to address that this evening?
Give me your mic.
Let me run it real quick. Look, I'll give it somewhere real quick. This is not a chat we have. We had a conflict of scheduling. We've got quite a few teams out here now that want to play soccer and we have two nets that need replacement or total four nets, I'm sorry, two, two for HBO.
Actually, one, one second. And really all this does is, this just expedite something that was going to be done next year anyways. Apparently the goals that we have out there now are the original goals that we purchased when we built the park. Due to the demand of the fields that we have available, we actually need to create one more field, which we can do in the outfield of the ball diner. And in times that it's needed, do not conflict with the use of the ball diner. So I did make a bunch of calls. I believe I called five different vendors and were able to obtain four hooks. As you see listed on the proposal, there is a pretty good range from number one to number four. The biggest thing I got out of the conversations I got with these vendors were sometimes it was the material, sometimes it was just the finish. That, that was the cost determination on, on some of these. I did, I did make a call to the number one, the Dimmerborn Enterprises, which is located in Attica. They are somewhat a local company compared to the rest of them. And they are able to supply us with two official size goals for a total cost of $1,940. As you do see on the proposal though, shipping, shipping had been estimated, so there could be a slight fluctuation if those charges are for what they actually put in the quote.
Basically, we had a double looking on an organization that had been here for the last four years and a new organization that's coming in. We can still accommodate everybody, but we need this set of nets. We tried to get some that they were going to bring down for prayer in, but that didn't pan out fine.
Yeah, that is correct. At one point I thought they may add some extra nets from a facility they were using up that way. As it turns out, those nets were moved to another location that they're currently using, so they, they were not available.
I have a question.
Sure.
My kids play soccer in the old football field behind the administration in New Haven. They have their two old soccer, would those be available or no?
I would, I would know.
If they're just sitting there not being used at all, they're just sitting against the field.
They are currently, I can answer that one. They are currently used by the New Haven youth soccer program.
The big ones?
The big ones belong to, they originally were Carter Mooney's when they leased the field from New Haven. Now, when that, when Carter Mooney left, they were presented to the village, to the school district of New Haven. Our girls do practice over there on occasion.
High school. Okay. That's what I was thinking.
At the administration.
Okay. Because they're just sitting there and I thought if, if we could make something where.
Sure. No.
They're just sitting there.
They're in pretty rough shape or something.
And, and that's what I meant early on when I, when I mentioned about this is just kind of expediting something that was probably going to happen next year. Because one of the original sets is, is showing some pretty good fatigue and I was planning on replacing those next year anyways. So this just kind of expedite what we're going to have to do anyways. And kind of get the set of a GM this year of what we're facing with scheduling lines.
All right. Which one's your recommendation? Which comment?
I recommend the one, the, the set from Dimmerborn out of Attica for $1,940. That comes with everything necessary, the net, the clips. These goals are light enough, they don't really require a low kit.
Okay. I was, I was going to ask you.
I believe on that one, I believe it was listed, there are 165.
Dimmerborns don't have the wheel set, Cap? You know, I, even though they're light, I still recommend getting that if you would just because if people are moving them, I don't want them dragging them around and stuff.
To be honest with you, because this one was so light, I don't think they even offered one for it.
Really?
Right.
Yeah, they may, I'm familiar with those. In fact, I think Dimmerborn, I've dealt with at New Haven Community Schools and they, and well, I've dealt with Bearman too. And the Bearman ones, they are heavier. They're heavier steel, they need to wheel kids and stuff like that. But for as often as we're using them, the aluminum ones are Dimmerborn would be.
More than average.
You know, I purchased at New Haven, so I, I don't have a problem with the $1,940.
No, and, you know, these are, they don't have, you know, when you, when you talk about wear and tear on them, I mean, yes, sure, the nets you can get roughly four or five years out of a set of nets. Nets taking them down during that.
You never have a problem with the frames, in my opinion. You always have a problem with the nets.
Well, parts of the frame and that's what we're dealing with now because parts of the frame are, are steel because they're weighted, so they stay upright. And that steel is starting to rot out.
Right.
And that's where the fatigue portion comes in. So we're at that stage with that one out there now that, you know, we'll make it through this season, but then we probably should retire it after that. So if we do that, we're going to be short of that. So hopefully we'll be able to shift this. If it looks like the need is still going to be there next year, we'll probably, if these ones worked out fine, I'll probably back up here asking for another set of the same ones. Judged by, you know, the pricing that I got.
We're just moving this ahead another year. We're just.
Pretty much that's the way I look at it, you know. Because I'd probably be here in the spring asking for this, this same proposal.
Any other questions? I make a motion, we approve the purchase of soccer nets from Dimmerborn Enterprises at $1,940.
I second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley.
And just so that we're clear on the minutes, this is an item that's being added, came up last minute and so, yeah, it's a clear, it's a good one to produce.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
And just for the board's knowledge, when I did contact them today to verify the time upon order, they were two weeks out from the time of order.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll, I'll make that phone call tomorrow.
Thank you. Any motion for close session?
I make a motion, we want a close session at 7:48. To consult with the township attorney regarding pending litigation.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Clerk Kendall.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Connell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Close session for 4:00.
We return from closed session at 8:32. Second.
Motion by Clerk Kendall, supported by Trustee Gurley.
Kendall?
Yeah, aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Connell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Okay. Open session.
That sure isn't going to be anymore.
At this time, like, I have two motions I'd like to propose. The first motion is to approve Attorney Evans to closely monitor the Sterling Heights lawsuit against a McCollum Intercepted Frame District and report to the board for future consideration of the best interests of the township.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Clerk Kendall. Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Connell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes.
My second motion is the motion to approve and authorize. Oh, I'm sorry. This motion to approve and authorize supervisor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to allow sewer connection for the proposed Title Travis Center on 26 Spa Road in Chesterfield, subject to finalization and approval of the contract by the township attorney.
I second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any questions, discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Connell?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I will make, now make that the best motion of the night. I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 8:35. I second.
Motion by Clerk Kendall, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.